Okay, be quiet.
Testing. Gotcha. Can hear you on the mic, John.
We've got about another minute before we begin.
So I have 7:30 and I just let in the last two individuals in the waiting room for now. And should any others join, I will go ahead and admit them to the city council meeting. But I do have 7:30 and so I'd like to go ahead and get started with this evening's April 20th committee of the whole. Before we begin, a couple of housekeeping items. For those who are joining us via Zoom or in the city council chambers, you will be afforded the opportunity for public comment to address the city council on matters that are specifically on this evening's agenda. After the city council has had the opportunity to discuss them. Members of the public who are present at city council chambers listening to this meeting, they'll be afforded the opportunity to provide public comment, which is in accordance with the procedures applicable to public comment at an in-person meeting. Primarily, members of the public must have signed in before the start of this meeting. And public comment will be afforded to those members of the public who are joining us on this conference line. So long as they've provided their contact credentials and the subject matter for which they want to speak about before the deadline, which is noticed or noted on this evening's agenda. We do ask that any persons wishing to speak, address the city council by keeping their comments to five minutes in length. And through the mayor as a whole, any profanity will not be tolerated. We have two items on the agenda, but before I get into those items, and I know it's not typical practice to make announcements during a committee of the whole meeting. However, due to the significance and timing, I just want to remind our viewers that we will be having a Rolling Meadows will be hosting a COVID-19 vaccination event. The vaccines will be administered on April 27th and May 18th. The call center for scheduling those vaccines will be live this Thursday and Friday, the 22nd and 23rd. The 22nd is for those ages 65 and older and Friday is for ages 16 and older because it is the Pfizer vaccine. The number to call for scheduling your COVID-19 vaccination is area code 8474975505. Again, day one on Thursday, the 22nd is for those ages 65 and older and day two is for 16 and over. So this is April 27th and May 18th that this will begin. Now moving back to the agenda at hand, we have the first item, which is Park Street Drainage Improvements. For this Director Horn, I'm going to defer to you first and then you can pass the torch when you are ready after you shared any background you feel relevant or vital.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to discuss this project with you and the rest of the city council. I'm here with our engineer, Matt Moffett, who I'll introduce later, but I'd like to give a little summary of why we brought this to the council today. The project, bringing it to the council really for two reasons. The first is it has evolved into a much bigger project than was originally planned in an effort to do a more holistic repair to the whole neighborhood. And secondly, I thought it was a good example of what we hope to bring to the council in the near future about how we're evolving our drainage program and how we're going to help residents hopefully in the future remedy drainage concerns. Obviously, that it's a little bigger task to tackle that committee of the whole presentation, but I thought this is something we could put together quickly since I saw it was a light agenda. I figured we'd throw it on the agenda and introduce you guys to this project. In about 2017, myself and the utility superintendent at the time drove Park Street after a significant rain event. And I had never seen anything like it. Apparently, it's very common in Rolling Meadows, but almost the entire block of residents had some pumps in their backyards pumping water into the street. So at that time, we talked about doing some sort of comprehensive repair just for the Park Street area to alleviate those drainage concerns. Shortly after that, we put it in the in the capital plan out several years. But shortly after that, our House representatives contacted the city manager. And as part of the new governor's capital improvement bill, there was almost like a call for projects where we had to put together a list of our top, you know, 15 or 20 capital improvement projects and based on the funding that those House representatives were able to secure. That those funds were earmarked for specific projects. Well, for Rolling Meadows, that project was the Park Street project and as such, we received or the city received $300,000 in funding that is managed by the DCO. And to go towards some sort of long-term drainage improvement in that neighborhood. Obviously, as you all know, 2020 was not exactly the year for capital improvements, so we pushed the project on a year. And shortly after that, we brought an item to the city council for some viability study, engineering study that was performed by Baxter and Woodman. And that that project helped define the scope of the project and included an area that our city engineer in 2012 had actually identified just up the block from there. So we we started looking at a more comprehensive improvement in the area. As the city knows, the city council approved two resolutions for us to submit grants, grant requests from the I E P A and the M W R D. We, the city did receive $84,000 in grant funding as part of one of those grant pursuits. I will be bringing in the very near future intergovernmental agreement to accept those those funds. But I just wanted to give you a little background on the project to understand as a precursor to Matt's presentation because you'll find that especially at the end of the of his presentation, we'll walk you through kind of a five-year projection of costs. And I wanted to make it clear at the beginning, when you see these costs, understand that the first two years of the project are really the meat and potatoes of the project and that's the the main line and the main engineering and those two projects account for, I believe, Matt will give you the specifics, but I believe it's about $800,000. But remember of those $800,000 in the first two years, we also plan on utilizing 100% of the grant funds we've received. So almost half of the total project cost should be paid for through grant funding. And and as you was explained in the memorandum, city staff will continue to pursue available funding opportunities. I think actually city manager Crumstock is going to talk about one as the second item of this meeting. So it is a good project. It is evolved into a multi-year project and Matt will explain why. We, as part of this project, we have a lot of permitting and a lot of project coordination as you both or as you all know. The project limits are adjacent to the Rolling Meadows Park District, Park Kimball Park and the school district 15 school, Kimball School. So there will be some coordination there. There are great opportunities to include potentially the school and some learning opportunities. So we are, we have high hopes for this project. But with that, before I hand it over to Matt, I'll just tell you a little bit about Matt. He's the Associate Vice President of Water Resources and Natural Resources at Baxter Woodman, where he's been employed since 2013. He's an active member in the American Public Works Association where he currently serves as the Chicago Metro Chapter Secretary. He is also an active member in the American Society of Civil Engineers, where he has served as president of the Environmental Water Resources Institute, Chicago Chapter. So Matt is very experienced in in water resources, stormwater issues, stormwater drainage issues. He's given many presentations on public-private partnerships with stormwater drainage improvements at some of our Chicago chapter expos. So without further ado, I will hand it over to Matt and we will both be available for questions following his presentation. Thank you, Mayor. I assume you give him the controls. Is that how it works?
Yeah, what I was going to do is wait for Matt to give an introduction. I didn't want to talk all over him, but Matt, when you're ready, I can stop sharing and you can just grab the screen. The securities are set up for you to take it when you are ready.
All right, I am ready, Mayor. Thank you, Director Horn. Bear with me as I switch us over here. All right, are we all seeing a full screen of the PowerPoint here? Great. So yes, as Director Horn said, my name's Matt Moffett, Associate Vice President with Baxter and Woodman. I specialize in water resources, stormwater improvements and whatnot. And as Rob said, Director Horn said, we're here to talk about the Park Street Meadow Drive Stormwater Improvement Program. Collaborating on the history a little bit, so this area, you know, we've got some significant rear yard flooding on either side of Park Street designated here and kind of the purple outlines in the lower portion of the of the image of the screen here. And additionally, some really quite significant ponding and frequent ponding we found at the intersection of Meadow and School Drive to the to the west and South Drive to the east from Meadow. It gets about two feet deep in water there, which is impassable to residents. Parents going to school, you know, drop for drop-off school and even at that depth can be impassable for most emergency vehicles. And as we were looking at this, these two identified problem areas, we'd also come across a number of other smaller roadway ponding areas where the water might get, you know, six to eight inches deep in what I would consider a standard normal rain event. We'll get into a little more detail of that. So we really kind of wanted to first lay out the kind of the area that we're looking at and the problems that are that are being experienced. The history of this here area, the city has records of residential complaints from the 1970s and following that decades ago, there was some programs to install rear yard inlets where they put like a small kind of underdrain pipe along the rear property lines. Over time, with these being in residents' backyards and being smaller pipes, these pipes get compromised, whether they're crushed or filled with roots or completely dug up during landscaping projects and very difficult for for city staff to to maintain and going through multiple residential properties, they certainly don't get maintained cohesively by the residents. And in 20 or 2002, there was a stormwater management study done by the city's engineer where they identified the street intersection flooding as their problem area five. So this is in one of the the top problem areas identified in that overall management study where they're looking at really the the big problem areas and in the primary issues, not kind of those external issues of the rear yards or the lesser flooding. And then, as discussed earlier, last year, we came in with this with the initial intent to look at the feasibility of solution, various solutions and options for the rear yard issue and found that it really ties very directly, literally directly into the problem area five and that's this really is a comprehensive issue and we kind of expanded the viewpoint of of the assessment and the various problem areas throughout the neighborhood and also redirected our assessment of improvement options from the the primary of five was really looking at some overflow options to to improve the overflow that would have water leaving the intersection through the rear parking lot of the school flowing across the surface through the parking lot around the playground and across the park. We wanted to, as we were looking at this more comprehensive issue, we wanted to also look at a solution that had a lesser impact on those downstream stakeholders. Also, as I note here too, just within the last few years, even since the rear yard installations in the 70s, approximately 20% of the residents along that block of Park Street on either side have called into the city staff with complaints about rear yard drainage issues. Just kind of give you a idea of how many people this is impacting enough to call in. Certainly, there are those that that don't. One of the things that can impact this and why would there, you know, we're hearing more and more issues with drainages, we are getting larger and more frequent rain events. The the data is clear on this. Quick graph here showing annual rainfall totals, you know, precipitation totals from before 1900 up through just before 2020. And the green line here shows the an averaged amount of each year, best fit average across that total data, pretty clearly see that we are getting more rainfall per year. Another way to look at this, similar timeframe, a little over 100 years. This is looking at the observed number of extreme precipitation events and they define an extreme precipitation event as precipitation greater than two inches. So you're looking at oh, average across the 100 years about 1.6 events per year that exceed two inches of rainfall. And but you can really see that our larger rainstorms are getting bigger. And giving you this kind of quick stormwater engineering 101 here. So we are all on the same page of what we're talking about. I'm sure most of us have heard the term of 100-year storm and it's happening more and more than every 100 years now. And so the terms 100-year storm and 10-year storm are what I'd consider a poor way of defining these. They add confusion. But what it really is, is it's based off a statistical analysis of roughly 100 years worth of rainfall data that a storm that has a 1 in 10 chance of occurrence in a given year is or a 10% chances a 10-year storm. So they do the inverse of that or a 1 in 100 chance, 1% chance is a 100-year storm. So that's kind of where those definitions come from. And it's based off, like I said, that statistical analysis of experienced rainfall data. An industry standard for a level of service is a 10-year storm. So most, most municipal work, anything done for DOT, and this isn't just Illinois, this is across the country. We're shooting for a 10-year level of protection. That is, at the very least, our streets are passable in a 10-year storm and preferably our streets are dry in a 10-year storm per per definitions. And as I mentioned, the rainfall frequency and size has been increasing. The Illinois State Water Survey is who defines what a rate, what size a rainstorm is, how much rain, at what rate we get is a 10 and 100-year storm. We had been using up until last year, what was called Bolton 70 of the publication that was done in 1989 to define those rain events. Well, they updated the definition of the size of a rain event back in 20 or just in 2019, redefined it Bolton 75. And it's approximately a 15% increase in volume, so 15% more rain in a 10-year 24-hour storm. One more slide on our stormwater lessons here. So storms, when we say a 10-year storm, it's not or 100-year storm, it's not just two inches or five inches. It's how many inches over how many hours. A great example of that is if we take a one day or 24-hour storm, 10-year storm is defined by 5.5 inches and over 24 hours is a 10-year storm. Roughly five inches moving in a shorter duration. So for a two-hour storm, roughly five inches in two hours is a 100-year storm. So five inches could be a 10-year storm or could be 100-year storm. It just depends what duration that rainfall comes. So that concludes my rainfall definition 101. I can certainly ask more questions going to more depth, but I just want to make sure we all kind of had a little basis understanding of, you know, we get 100-year storm every five years now. So they have updated those definitions. So we should be seeing those much less frequently. But yes, we are seeing more rain more frequently. So following our analysis, we built a hydrologic and hydraulic computer model using XP Swim. It's what the previous study used, kind of the industry standard in the area, at least for analyzing stormwater flooding. And we we run existing conditions models, so using the existing pipes and see what the flooding experiences are, get those to match up with what was observed in real life with real storm events. And then we can play with pipe sizes, storage options and and the whole array of creativity as we can to come up with proposed alternatives. What we're seeing here is the total project of what we would recommend for moving forward for the whole neighborhood. This project allows for mitigation of the providing an opportunity for mitigation of the rear yard ponding the along Park Street. So we're looking at a 24-inch pipe coming down Park Street. This is large enough to improve the ponding that is seen at the eastern of Park Street there as well as capacity for price of residence to connect a a yard drain to this pipe to take to relieve the ponding in their yards. Extending to the north, storm sewer size sufficiently to again, give us that 10-year level protection. So streets passable and preferably drive for a 10-year storm event per the new definition. As you see, when we get to the intersection of Meadow, I don't know if you can see my mouse that can help by pointing as we get to the intersection of Meadow and School or Seton South. We, our pipe size bumps up to a 48-inch diameter pipe, which is, you know, rather large pipe, but there's, as we saw before, there's a lot of water that gets that intersection. And this improvement will keep that intersection dry in a 10-year storm. As we, we then continue southwest to the southwest side of the school where we turn and run between the shopping plaza and the school and park district out to the creek. And the whole idea here was rather than trying to, the existing pipe from the intersection kind of goes north of the building and runs diagonally across the park. Our thought was we didn't want to tear up the park. We didn't want to direct the water over land. It would be a more cost-effective project, but in doing so, we would really, you know, we'd have to do some major work through their driveway and intersection here to allow the water through. And we'd be directing a whole lot of water to flow through the parking lot, across the playground and across the park that and we'd have to get their buy-in for that. So this solution really mitigates all of that. It routes the water around that downstream stakeholder and to the creek. The green lines shown are where we are. We were recommending to not be have the water flowing underground, but actually open it up to an open channel, a drainage swale. This is where we got some of the additional funding from the I E P A where we've discussed with them, we could have some native plantings in there, had some water quality issues, some different habitat environment. We'd even talked about opportunity to maybe have several zones of different types of planting with some signage that could be a learning opportunity for for the school there. You know, just some some different options that we have on the table, some some fun thoughts that we had and could be some additional grant funding potentially for that as well. Altogether, we're at 1.389 million dollars. Real quick, as I mentioned here, the the table above is the existing conditions, the flooding depth for a 210 or 100-year storm event at what we considered three of our critical intersections or points of interest intersections. And the table below is the proposed condition. So after constructing the recommended project, so as you can see at the intersection of Meadow and School, we go from 2.09 feet of water to zero. Meadow and Sigwalt, we go from point three to if we extend all the way to north to zero. And then Park Street and Oriole, all the way to the east, we go from point five four feet, so just over six inches to point two three, so just under three inches of water, which is, and that's three inches measured at the deepest points over by the by the curb. So there'd be barely any water at the crown of the road. So you know, some really great improvements for that 10-year. There would still be ponding at the Meadow and School Drive intersection for that 100-year storm. Again, this is 100-year as as defined with the updated rainfall definitions. So it would be expected to be extremely infrequent. To help with the cost of this and spreading it out over several years potentially, what we've shown here are what we would see as four different phases, some some clean breaks of projects that make sense. As Director Horn mentioned, phase one really is the the much larger part of this project. It has the largest pipe. We're dealing with having to get temporary, if not some small permanent easements from the park district and school districts both as we run alongside there. There is a village utility easement right through there, right about where the pipe is shown currently, which we would intend to try to use, but we also know there's a whole lot of utilities in there currently. So we might have to try to push it right to the edge of that easement, which is where I mentioned the permanent easement, but there's, there's a lot of more investigation before we can talk too much more about that and with any certainty. But so we have the other stakeholder coordination. We have a lot more permitting as we're going to have be outfalling into the creek, outfalling where we have the the flared-in section, the water releases from the pipe into the waterway. So there's just a lot more coordination and just that's larger parts of the pipe. So but that piece has to get done before we can do anything else because everything So, but that piece has to get done before we can do anything else because everything, the other projects need somewhere to go. Once we, you know, if we build Park Street first, we're going to be throwing a whole lot more water down to Meadow and it won't have anywhere to go. And it would actually be making problems worse in the interim until the rest was constructed. So we are looking at phase one along through the school district, park district area up from the creek up to Meadow. Phase two, from the terminus of phase one up to the intersection of Meadow and School. The worst point of the flooding to relieve that intersection. Phase three to address the rear yards and along Park Street and the intersection on the east end of Park. And then phase four was one of those, it wasn't one of the two initial primaries identified, the rear yards and the intersection. But in looking at our whole analysis, there's, you know, some moderate issues at the north end of phase four that, you know, if the city chose, we could add this on and, and help relieve that area. So when phasing it like this, this is just a, a rough estimate of projection. If we wanted to extend this out five years, the schedule is certainly flexible. It could certainly all be done in one year. Or it could be done over 10 years if you wanted. Um, this is just, you know, we, we looked at, if, if we broke it up, what would be, you know, what, what would be one way that would kind of make sense and, and be smooth? So I'm looking at efforts this year would be just design of phase one and phase two. At a hundred thousand dollars. The primary construction would start next year. So phase one, we estimate it would be roughly $675,000. And then also doing the design of phase three at that time. And again, all of this is flexible and can be shifted by year, no problem. 2023, phase two construction, phase four design, 24, phase three construction, 25, of course, then phase four construction. One of the reasons we're looking at doing a bit more of the design ahead of time is if we are able to find some additional funding, whether it's through any grant or partnership opportunities, or the council allocates it, it yourself. You know, maybe you would want to try to do phase two and earlier so that we could get that protection sooner to the intersection. Or, or even, or one of the other phases as well. So especially if there's any grant partnership earmark opportunities, we would want to kind of be ready for those. And as Director Horn had discussed previously as, as well, the city does have that just under $400,000, like 384, 387, something like that. From both the DCO and I E P A programs that would be applied to, can be applied some to some design engineering at this, this year. But then through the construction of phase one in 2022. So that would be roughly $400,000 off of that $700,000 next year potentially. So that makes that number more in line with the, the others. And kind of has a, makes it look a little more balanced across the five years when you think of it, consider it that way. I believe, yep, that was the end of my slideshow. And at this point, I would welcome any questions for myself or Director Horn.
Thanks for providing that presentation. Appreciate that. If you don't mind, I'm gonna let you keep the screen a little bit longer in case there are additional questions and you need to circle back to a slider too.
Certainly, certainly.
I do see we have a couple of hands up here. So why don't I go ahead and just open the floor? I see Alderman Veniziano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have two questions and maybe you explain this and I didn't understand it. But so how does adding these larger pipes example on like park? How does that help with the backyard drainage or does it not?
Certainly. So the pipes are sized so that it can take on the volume of the rear yard drainage. Holy, the, what Director Horn and my team have been discussing and our, our expectation for the along Park Street is that from that 24 inch pipe, every other property line, we would put a stub out. The, the city would put a stub out from the pipe to the, out of the road, cross the sidewalk to the property line. And there, so that there would be a location that residents could then put in their own drain lines and connect to a stub out that's been brought to their property line. So it, it's empowering the residents to have a solution where the main trunk line that's draining everything away is in the city's right of way and maintainable by the city.
Okay. And so would that, would it be cost beneficial to the residents? If the same construction company were to do the same, you know, the entire street, you know, I'm assuming there'd be a cost savings then to the residents. And do we have an idea of what, what that cost would be?
That, that's, that's something we could certainly discuss. Director Horne and I had some preliminary conversations about that already. You know, I, I think with going into the private property issues, there would, it, it might be a different contractor who would do that work, a contractor that's underground utility and working under streets with, in repatching it versus someone who has smaller equipment going between houses, working with fences and landscaping and whatnot. It, it's something that could be considered to look at an option with, with this project. It might be more, it, it could be a better option though to maybe look for a contractor to get to separately to help residents come together. I've seen it helps with some issues like that where municipality would help find a contractor, get group pricing for residents to come together and, and each hire that same contractor, but at the group pricing. So there's various options that can be considered. And, and I guess like I mentioned, Director Horne and I have already kind of started talking about that. But it's still really early on to really have to have a decision on something like that.
Okay. I, I think that, I think residents, especially in that area, that's going to be their first question. Is what kind of cost is that going to be to them? Because some of them did initially, like in the seventies, there's a lot of original owners in that area that put the investment in to have that backyard drainage. And so I can imagine they're going to say, well, we've already done this once. Why would we do it again? So to have those numbers would be, you know, at least an estimate would be very beneficial.
Yeah, I don't have the, that's, I'm sorry, I didn't answer that prior question. I don't have that off the top of my head, but we could, I come up with that pretty quickly.
Okay. And then my second concern was is all of this is leading to Kimball, Kimball Hill Pond, you know, that area, the creek. That already floods. So with this additional water drainage going there, what is, what is the expectation then for that flooding in that area if it already floods without this additional drainage?
Certainly. It's a great question. So the, A is first, I would say that all of the water that we would be sending to, to the creek there currently goes to the creek. Where we would certainly be getting it there a little quicker. Our pipes are designed to convey for a 10 year storm event. So the creek should, doesn't, should not be experiencing very much flooding in a 10 year storm event. In a hundred year storm event, our pipes, we like, as the table here showed, we would still have some upstream ponding here. The pipes can't convey all the water in a hundred year storm event. And it wouldn't change the, the flood maps that are controlled by FEMA because they're assuming everything's getting to it, to the creek when, to define those flood elevations. And, and reality, the, the, this, these, the sewer length is very small compared to the overall watershed of the creek, the sewer section, and the water can flow much faster through a sewer than it comes through the channel. So the peak flow rate through these sewers would be through the sewers and downstream before the creek would start rising from the upstream waters.
Yeah, if I, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry, Alderman Veniziano. I, I just wanted to add on to that. We have to remember that Salt Creek is a flash flood creek. It, it's not a creek that floods and stays flooded for seven days. It usually in four, in 48 hours is back down to a normal flow and you just have wet spots within the park. But as Matt said, most, if not all of the water, I would, I would say most of the water because the water that's in people's backyards doesn't get there for, for days after. But most of the water already goes there. It just goes in a different pipe or flows over land when it floods. So the reality is we're not looking to, we wouldn't even propose this project if we felt like it was going to flood out the downstream property. But again, you know, our, our first priority is to protect property and a park can dry out in two days. So that, that was really the intent is there's already, as you said, there's already a flooding problem there when we have a high rain event. We're not going to make it dramatically worse. So let's put it where the problem already exists.
I, I would say this won't make it any worse.
Yeah.
Okay. So we don't, so that's what my conclusion to that and your answer was that we're not going to be causing any flooding into the backyards that back up to the creek. Okay, okay, okay. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Alderman Veniziano. Alderman Budmats.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a quick question, based on the, where the pipes are proposed to go, especially the, like where the 48 inch pipe meets the 60 inch pipe on Meadow. It looks like the school would be a beneficiary of this, of this receiving some relief from potential flooding. Should we, is that anticipated? And then should we also be looking to that taxing district for some relief on the cost of this project?
You know, we haven't had any, any extensive conversations with the school district. We've mentioned the project, so they're aware of it. You know, that's a, a touchy thing, I guess, because, you know, I, I think there's a potential that we may need the school district and need them to cooperate with us to secure land or easement for us to put the pipe in. So quite honestly, you know, I, I think that's really, I would wait for direction by the city council on that, in that regard. I don't think it would be my position initially to do that unless directed by the city council. I appreciate the question, though. It does make sense.
I mean, yeah, I mean, do they, do they have flooding issues as, as a result of, with the rest of the neighborhood or not really?
Not that I'm aware of. I haven't, I'm, I could certainly research that, Alderman Budmats. It's a good question. But I, I don't recall ever hearing that they have a flooding issue there.
Okay. Thank you very much. I yield my time.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. I see Alderwoman San, Sanoyka.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I just have some general questions and it's related to the assessments that were mentioned earlier. So how long do assessment and storm water management studies remain valid given that the residents engage in landscaping, escaping projects and other home improvements that may change elevation or other drainage systems? And, and I ask because, you know, 2002 and 18 late, 18 years later, that 2020 assessment. Did, did staff or the city engineer note it, note any significant changes between those two studies and assessments?
Matt, I'll defer to you on that because you obviously did the feasibility study. So.
Sure. So i- in general, I, I would say an assessment of study it holds its validity for really quite some time. The, the, the only thing from the 2002 study that I would really say is outdated is the updated definition of the rainfall data. So when they were looking at a 10 year or 100 year improvements or what, what the results were for those size storms, the definition of those storms is larger now. Generally, when we're looking at being able to take on the flow for, we're, we're looking at a larger scale, I guess I'd say. So when we're considering the flow in the rear yards and, and, and putting that into our, our model, we're, we're assuming that everything can get to the sewer. Nothing's blocking it. Nothing's being bonded. And that's the, that's because that's the conservative assumption. So that if there's anywhere, anything that can't get to the sewer right now, may at some point, somebody might redo their landscaping or add a drain or something that the water can then get to the sewer. So we want to make sure that we've planned accordingly. So the, i- in general, the, the size of the pipes don't change. The slope of the ground in overall doesn't change. You might have little deflections on, on each individual property. But it's still sloping, you know, in the extent of the, of the blue line here outlined, which is the sewer shed, still sloping along park from the east to the west at approximately the same slope. The roadways are still the same. The pipe size under the road are still the same. So really the only thing that's changed as far as being pertinent to these larger scale municipal recommendations would be the definition of the, of the rain event. And, and to that point, the, the study done in 2005 is still valid. Except it's just when they state you have 10 year protection, it's probably more like seven year protection. And as that definition has changed.
Uh, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Moffett. And I, I suppose then, I, I would like some, some, just some follow up that the council can anticipate for. I, I understand that Director Horn mentioned that this is this kind of the City of Blowing Meadows Stormwater Engineering Plan debut and that we should expect some similar projects in the future, given potential funding sources. And I, I guess, I suppose then, I, I would want to know how additional areas that experience underserved stormwater drainage surface will be prioritized in the future or will be relying kind of on this, on this older data that's been done in 2002 and kind of moving forward from there. If no further comment from staff, then I have no further questions at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. I see Alderman O'Brien, then Alderman Bessensee.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And thanks, Rob and Matt. Super helpful information. I do happen to be in this ward of where this is. So this, I did get several thumbs up from residents saying, woo hoo. It looks like we might be making progress on this. The, the, that was most of the, the responses I got. But a question I actually recently received as we started the meeting. And I think Matt, if I was following right, in our packet, it was slide 11, but I think in yours, it was either eight or 10. They just wanted to get a feel for least impact to the school, the church, the residents, which obviously you guys are all taking into accordance in your collaboration with the other agencies. So I'm here just from a boundary perspective, if we talk Meadow, is that roughly going to be, I mean, throughout all the phases, however we end up chopping it up to get it done, most financially responsible. Is it roughly from that back parking lot of Kimball Hill to South Street? Or does it go, like I was trying, it doesn't go as far north as Campbell, does it, Rob? I'm just trying to see what the parameter is on Meadow and then the furthest east it goes on Park Street. I think it's Oriole. It looks like it doesn't go, because that's where big pooling is, is at Oriole and Park right now. It doesn't go around where Park turns into Dove, correct? They were just asking for kind of a, a rough outline of where this is all going to take place.
Yeah, that's, that's correct, Alderman O'Brien. We are just going until, I believe it is the Oriole intersection. We are going to replace the inlets that are on that corner. Currently, and I can't believe we didn't mention it, but you know, as I probably told several of you, you know, the, 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 the community was built out before there were MWRD regulations. So that dictated storm sewer sizes. So the, the pipe size on this street currently is 10 inches. And so that's, you know, that's primarily why the, the flooding occurs in the streets. It's just the pipes are just not big enough to take the water. So, yeah, we would go east. Park Street would be east to Oriole, where we would replace the, the inlets at that intersection. The northern limits, I, I can't remember, Matt, what that northern.
Believe that's Sig Walt, I believe.
Sig Walt, maybe? Yeah.
Okay. That helps. They were just wondering general boundaries. Like it wasn't as far north as Campbell. It was really like school, south Sig Walt, that area.
Yeah, we tried to, you know. Yeah, that, that border map that Matt showed earlier, where it showed the drainage limits that were in the study, that's where we tried to focus the improvement on. So it would never extend beyond those limits. So that, yeah, Campbell Street is north of that blue limit. So, yeah, we wouldn't extend to that. So, you know, and, and to Alderman Sanoyka's question, I apologize. I didn't hear it as a question as much of a statement. You know, the thing about the Park Street project is, as I indicated, we put that on a list of 15 or 20 other projects, most of which were road projects because it was. fifteen or twenty other projects, most of which were road projects, um, because it was fresh and it was something that was comprehensive. And as I have discussed with you, uh, personally, that we are evolving away from the backyard drainage installs that, that don't last but six, seven years, and then they become unreliable and, and we end up back there with the same problem. This is the first one we had an opportunity to look at comprehensively. And in addition, we received three hundred thousand dollars for it. So it was kind of a, a nudge in the, in the side that, hey, let's pursue this project now. There, there's real benefit to pursuing this. So, um, I apologize for not, uh, answering your previous question, so.
Great, I'm all set, uh, Mr. Mayor. That was, uh, the only questions I had. Thanks, Rob and Matt.
Sure. All right. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Bessesi?
Yes, um, thank you. This was, I mean, in the beginning of this, you mentioned that this is kind of the, I if you want to call it a kickoff or whatever, our, our fir-, our first part of it. I do know that there are, even within this ward here, some other, which I would consider significant flooding issues that are not within the blue area here.
Oh, yeah.
Particularly along Dove Street. Having been, been a former resident for ten years on Dove Street, I know that there's a lot of backyard flooding, and we're talking feet, not inches. I do know that Dove Street floods substantially in a lot of these, a lot of these rains, unless something's been done since like two thousand. So I was just wondering, um, do you have like, uh, I know this is probably going to be our, our all-consuming thing for the next, uh, four to five years, but are there plans on other areas potentially that are on a, on a list? I know there's other residents saying, what about my area? It floods a lot.
Yeah, cer- certainly, Alderman Bessesi. Um, yeah, we, we are, you know, and, and I, I hate, I hate to, uh, all my thunder to be lost at this meeting when, uh, we have a drainage, uh, uh, program meeting that we're going to be presenting at in the near future. But, um, as I said before, the, the program in the past was really just four-inch drain tile in people's backyards that would run across backyards and, and end up discharging in near an inlet or in an inlet. And, and the reality is that wasn't a comprehensive, long-term solution to the drainage problem. It was a quick fix. It was done with the, the very best of intentions, but it, it, there was no staying power in that. And so what we're doing is we're using GIS, we're tracking all of our drainage complaints, all of our drainage problem areas. We're trying to use that data to develop a more comprehensive programs. And there's no, there's no, um, you know, obviously that one year, uh, that Matt laid out, it's like seven hundred thousand dollars or whatever the case is. But the other years are, are significant but not overwhelming, and there's nothing to indicate that we can't, um, that we can't do multiple projects in a year, or that we can't roll from this program right into the next program. You know, this community, as I indicated before, is underdesigned, because of the MWRD regulations. We have infrastructure needs that, you know, obviously you'll hear about in the near future, uh, related to water mains. And so these are programs that need to be done every year. Uh, you know, you're never going to do them all quickly, but you have to do them all, you gotta do them consistently, and you just have to keep working at it. And over time, you make the improvements that need to be made. So, um, so, yeah, uh, to your point, Alderman Bessesi, I can probably think of thirty areas like you're describing, and, and I'm not even exaggerating, it's, but we are identifying those areas and we're trying to build a plan to get those in the works. And, you know, that's something we want to talk about in the near future as well, is to potentially start doing some preliminary engineering on some of these projects. So when we do get exposed to some of this grant funding or these quick, uh, capital improvement plans that come out of Springfield or, or Washington, that we are, um, uh, agile enough to get, get our plans in right away and, and get some of those, those funding opportunities. So your point is well-made, um, but we have to start somewhere, I guess.
Yeah, I, I, I get that, because I know also it was been brought up in prior, uh, meetings, like I think it's along Hicks. Uh, Alderman Budmats might know, there's a large area there where the, the sidewalks and everything, and I mean, it, it, it does impact the residents quite a bit over there as well. So, thank you very much for your explanation. Um, that's pretty much it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bessesi. Um, any other questions from any member of the council while we have, uh, Matt and Director Horn on the floor here? And it doesn't look like there are any additional questions, comments, or concerns. So, Matt, thank you for providing the presentation. Director Horn, thanks for providing the support and the background information. We will, uh, continue following this subject as you bring additional information back to the council.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Now, as we move forward, uh, and change gears a little bit toward potentially tapping the well for funding sources with this next item, which is the American Rescue Plan. But I'll do, Manager Crumstock, I will, uh, go ahead and allow you the floor when you are ready. But we have this subject here talking about financial stimulus for infrastructure and for the community. So I'm interested to hear your thoughts on this at an early conceptual level.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. You are correct. As we've talked about, this is in for information purposes at the stages, and we just want to go over, the biggest point that I do want to stress is that this is long-term financial stability and sustainable operation performance. It really is one of those kind of things. We can tap into this now roughly two point nine million dollars. But at the same point in time, capital really and infrastructure is really the main part. I do want to emphasize that the rules and the paperwork are still not completed. We're still, every day, we almost get something else new to us about, hey, when this comes out, the first amount will be this, and then your second amount has to be used before twenty twenty-four. Actually, on Monday, um, Finance Director Melissa Gallagher was asked by the state to confirm something because when that drop of the first amount, they're using actually a state account to give it the money. So that's a little concerning because if it gets dropped into it, hopefully it is separated from some of our other revenues. But again, we do want to make sure that, at this point in time, staff is thinking the best use for the money and the allocation is really for future water and sewer infrastructure projects. Even the project that we just talked about at this point in time, if we expedited the one point three million dollars, it would get it done quicker, sooner, and also less inconvenience in the area over just one year or two years compared to three or four. We really do strongly believe that when you look at the American Rescue Plan, our future water and sewer infrastructure really does meet that. To go back a little bit into the Wayback Machine, as Mayor Gallo knows, in twenty twenty, obviously, I was tracking the old Heroes information. That did not pass the US Congress. US, uh, the Heroes Grant would have given a little more flexibility to each of the municipalities, how it was actually utilized, but that one did not pass. Turn the, uh, clock a little bit into twenty twenty-one, and the American Rescues Plan, also called the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, acronym is ARPA, was signed and completed by the Congress. And the President obviously signed that on March eleventh, starting the clock that we're actually in at this point in time. The House, um, bill actually looked quite different from the Senate bill. The Senate bill is the actual one that passed. That was the one that took out pensions and some other, the pieces. But this American Rescue Plan really is based and completed by the Senate with the House, um, confirming it overall. When you look at this plan, um, it's enormous. It has numerous parts in the plan. It does have an overall value of one point nine trillion dollars. It's used by municipality, states, Medicare, Medicaid policies, there's agricultural provisions, transportation, infrastructure, and a whole bunch of other things. And I want to touch base on a few of those other pieces. But the local funding portion is approximately a hundred and thirty billion dollars. It is equally divided between cities and counties. Localities will receive the funds in two dispersment, like I was alluding to before. The first one is supposed to happen roughly sixty days after signage, and that is that May tenth, um, point in time. The second one is supposed to be one year later in twenty twenty-two or later. That's why the, uh, they're stating, once they have the rules, how do you get the second point, or are they just going to be giving it to you? But again, funding must be done for the American Rescue Plan by calendar year twenty twenty-four. When you look at the overall, um, I put in some additional information how it's actually, uh, provided. From what we've been told and what we've seen, um, the City of Rolling Meadows is scheduled to receive about two point nine million dollars from the act. Um, in the old Heroes, um, in twenty twenty, we were looking about five million dollars. But any money at this point in time doing infrastructure or anything is greatly appreciated. But again, we're looking at about two point nine million dollars from this, um, act that was, uh, passed. In the write-up, I do talk about what are eligible uses of funds. Um, you can actually read that. But what I would actually mention is the final bullet point that's in there is make investments in water sewer and broadband infrastructure. We're not really doing broadband, but our water and sewer really needs to be addressed. And I think for the city council who's sitting before that before, you've already seen our Baxter Woodman program, when we did an analysis of overall, our rates on some of the capital items that need to be done. So it really makes the most investment in the water and sewer, the most beneficial for using this item. We do have a backlog of, obviously, capital items, but it also allows some relief into the utilities fund as we continue doing projects. And infrastructure really is the point. I do want to mention, part of the write-up that I did is that the restrictions for the use of the funds, and most of these were in the House, but were removed from the Senate and is actually removed from the overall accepted act. Um, and again, it did talk about offsetting tax reductions or delaying, and the biggest one was for pension funds because the act, and specifically, when you talk to and hear from the legislators, they were making sure that the investment would be done to stimulate the economy. Overall, that's their biggest push, is stimulating the economy, putting projects into work, putting people into work, and also making sure that items are really being completed. As I mentioned before, all the funds that you're actually allocated must be spent by the end of calendar year twenty twenty-four. As I reiterated, um, the US Treasury is still working on documentation. There's going to be all kinds of paperwork that we know, there's going to be documentation. And I would also remind everybody that our auditors will be auditing each of these, um, items. They will look at it singly because it is its own act and also how we're utilizing it, and then making sure each of the I's and T's are actually crossed. Overall, I also wanted to give you, when, uh, Finance Director Melissa Gallagher and I were talking about it, the GFOA, um, principles about using non-reoccurring, one-time, um, items. And again, even when you read through the write-up, it's critical infrastructure in the water and sewer and aging community, but also looking at some of these items that we can start addressing and actively working on. I know that it will put more emphasis on Public Works and obviously the Public Works employees, um, to do that. And obviously, with most of our water programs, we do use, um, Baxter Woodman, but we also use our JN for sewer programs and limited, but sometimes we do use our city engineer, Burke Engineering. But between Baxter Woodman and RGN, they'll be doing a bunch more analysis, looking and actually putting some of these targeted strategically important, long-term infrastructure and assets that we have for the benefit or of the City of Rolling Meadows. And that's what they really, really want to make sure that you're doing, the benefit for the City of Rolling Meadows, but overall, our long-term look. I do want to reemphasize, one thing that we've always said is, um, staff and also as the city council has always addressed for anybody listening, it's very prudent, and we've always looked at an eye towards long-term financial stability and sustainability of our performances, but also looking at the capital overall. That's why we look at it, that's how we reevaluate it. During the recession, we did not slow down or stop doing, uh, capital. We made sure that we were still doing it because it, infrastructure needs to be maintained. It's a strategic investment in long-term assets, and these are living assets, as you can see. And I want to reiterate something that Public Works Director, um, Rob Horn has stated, is that, you know, when we started working on things in the fifties, in the sixties and seventies, we used the best engineering that we had at that point in time. Now we're undersized, now we've put more stress on different things. A lot of these things make sure that the long-term health of water sewer are actually being maintained. I do want to reiterate for anybody, again, it's a second reiteration that any funds that are received by the City of Rolling Meadows is audited by a city auditor and other eight outside agencies, just not the US Treasury. We also heard that the state might want to be looking at that too, because now that they know that it's coming through a state amount, um, an account that we have with them too. I do want to, um, mention, and I did mention, there's a whole litme, uh, different things that are in the act, but for businesses or residents who are out there, part of this act also deals, and this is off the city part, but it does have a small business provision. And I do want to list a few of the items that are in the write-up, just for anybody who's listening. And again, I would do want to mention, the state and, um, the county will also be receiving their own amount of funds. And hopefully, they will be increasing or enhancing some of the programs that they have. But at this point in time, small business provisions that I do mention and do want everybody to hear about is that there was seven point two five billion for the Paycheck Protection Program, and that's for forgivable loans. There was made, um, they made some more not-for-profit eligibility in the, um, Paycheck Protection Program, and we would tell people, look into that, because if you're a five oh one C three, how they looked at that, there's some exclusions that are in there too. There's fifteen billion for targeted economic injury disaster loans for advanced payments. There's twenty-five billion for restaurant, bars, and other eligible providers of food and drink. There's one point two five billion for shuttered venue operators. And then there's also a hundred and seventy-five million to create a community navigator pilot. And again, those are other things that are for small businesses, but really, between your accountant, between some of the tax folks, it's something to look into because some of the SBAs will be also receiving some money, and they will be able to provide some of those items. When we do receive a notice, we do try putting that onto our website. We do try notifying the best that we can do that too. I do want to reiterate, and I do say overall, that the Recovery Act, um, Rescue Plan Act, um, it's really to provide emergency grants, lending and investments to hard-hit small businesses so they can rehire and retain workers and purchase the health and sanitation equipment that they need to keep workers safe. You know, it's really an other opportunity to put people investing into our small businesses, but also making sure that those economically disadvantaged areas, um, including minority-owned businesses, have an avenue to continue working and continue growing. Finally, um, for businesses and, and individuals, as I mentioned before, I would refer them to and keep your eye open, just like what we're doing from the state of Illinois and Co-County for the, any of their programs that they have in place, and continue to enhance. And that's one thing that we keep on hearing, even on Monday, when we heard there's going to be some enhancements, but they just don't know what it is. And we also mentioned to people, reach out to us at that point in time. Like I said before, this is still a very lively, um, living document that keeps on coming up. We're still finalizing and waiting for the US Treasury, um, to give us the final documents. This is all in for information purposes, but we wanted to make sure that the council knows what the staff's thinking is on this. And also, right after, we just talked about a large one point three million dollar project, which was a sewer project, I mean, it's stormwater specifically, we want to make sure that people understand and the council see the rationale that the staff has at this point in time, that the best use for the money for the allocation is for future water and sewer infrastructure projects. We're going to keep our eye on long-term financial stability, but also making sure that the overall utility fund is sustainable and operating at peak performance, and making sure at that point that we're utilizing two point nine million dollars in a long-term look. look.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. Is that it for the background and the the presentation on the concept as it stands?
That is it. And again, it is in for information. We're more than happy. We continue monitoring what's coming out at this point in time, and that's part of the discussions. As you know, this has been over a year, year and a half that I continue monitoring. It's changed dynamic, but the stability and also the long term look is always been how do we make sure that where we sit at this point in time? And we don't have any carve outs. We don't have the rules. When we get the rules, obviously, if something changes or something, we would have more of that. But right now, specifically, everything that we're hearing and everything that's in there is the best use in the long term financial use for the City of Rolling Meadows would really be for the city's utility fund to do the capital.
Sure. Thank you. I just I I find it a bit shocking initially that of the the trillions of dollars that, you know, the one point nine trillion of dollars that is going to be pumped out as stimulus, we're anticipating two point nine million dollars. And this evening, we just discussed one ones, I'm not going to call it a small project, but as far as its regional span, it's a small project within the city that's that's at a cost of one point three million dollars. And so it's important that if if we are limited to two point nine million dollars in the upfront direct money to Rolling Meadows, that that we use it very specifically and get the the most value that that we can at this time. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns for Manager Crumstock on this subject? Well, Manager Crumstock, I don't think there are any questions at this time. I know you'll keep us up to date as more information comes in or when the the revenue hits the accounts, and then we can go ahead and bring it to a council level for further discussion after that.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council.
Thank you. So with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn this evening, call it an early one. Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Veneziano, for that second. So the clerk, please call the roll.
Bessesi.
Yes.
Yes, Bess.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Budmats.
No, I want more.
Come in, be off, we have more.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Well, with six in favor and one opposed, we're still leaving. Have a wonderful evening.